At the table and I see the presence of a form so, with that said, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Reverend Jones, would you please an indication?
Sure. Let's bow heads. Heavenly Father, Lord in Jesus' name, we do thank you again for this day, Lord. We thank you, God, for, uh, Lord, for, for how you care about our town. And I pray, Lord, help us, God, to make the right decisions, Lord, that need to be made, that be in the best interest for the town, for the retreat, for everybody concerned, God. And we do thank you, Lord, for blessing this town the way that you have through the years. And God will not fail to give you the praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Stand as we're able, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, you do things over and over the same way. And I, I've had two problems with my beg and I watched Reverend Jones, sir, hold on the wall. I added, please stand as you are able. And he was...
But I ain't had a bra.
Let me, like, that, I just wanted to take that. Okay, we have a force, either written form or electronic form of minutes of the previous meeting, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or make changes if needed.
My confession, we approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
Okay, here's your discussion. Are all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Please signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
So same sign, the minutes are approved. Okay. Next, I want our given citizens time.
Can we, there's some, uh, go ahead.
No, I, I follow my instructions if it's all right about them.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, and I, I call bacon cheese out of you. There you go, come on.
Becky Harrison, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I've been gone for nine weeks, so I've missed a lot, but I'm very grateful that the clockwork sound is gone. And can you tell us anything? Did you, did we ever hear back from them? What?
Stopped one day and never started again.
Well, I forgot that on my microwave, I had a, a little piece of paper that said, stop the hum. And that was my little phrase, but I'm very thankful because last time it started when I got back from California, so.
If it starts back, we know what the common denominator is.
We thank you for your participation in that. It just stopped. Yeah, it is magic. It was magic.
Thank you real quick, I'll get you to say to you, I mean, really, I appreciate you making the point, coming back and, and mentioning that it's been resolved now.
It's not safe, it won't happen again.
Again, I, I'm not beating anybody up or whatever, but it's, it's real easy to complain about things when things get bad, but I appreciate you, you appreciate us.
Well, well, well. Okay, anybody else have any questions? You go, come talk to us.
I wasn't going, but I was...
Come right ahead, you're welcome, you come on.
As I was, um, speaking to Mr. Jones here, the, um, jake brakes, so you know where I, I live, 15 North Main Street, and I, it's just, I just don't want a truck to veer off and come through my living room or something. They have the runaway truck ramps. I don't understand all the mechanics of a truck, but if they could not do that, that would be much appreciated to preserve the quietness, respect the speed limit of this town. If I wanted to live on a highway, I want to buy a house on 81, but they don't need to turn this main street here into their cut through and be out of control. There still are laws that they have to abide by, and I would appreciate them to stop with the jake brakes at four in the morning. There's no need for it. There's no need for it.
I'd like to listen to them.
I've, I've, I've done some research on the jake brake thing, and, and from what I gather, case law, that's a safety thing on a truck, and there's nothing we can do.
The one part of the law that he did was they must have adequate money, and that's the key to it. A jake brake won't lock, man, a bit more sound on as the truck does on its foot. It's, the idiot's got to have the noise.
Okay.
So anyway.
I'll get some earmuffs.
Well, no, it, it, that's another one, but we appreciate you coming.
There's people, they're down the road close, and I guess private citizens put up a sign about jake brakes.
I can tell you that after one of our meetings, I contacted the, uh, the main guy in With County with VDOT, and he told me, so VDOT does not support engine brake signs. There is no state statute restricting the use of engine brakes. Although the Code of Virginia requires vehicles to be equipped with an exhausting, with an exhaust system in good working order, if future requests for brake noise restrictions should be requested, it would have to go through DMV, and the agency would have to measure the problems, would have to measure the problem and do a study before they would even start to, to...
Noise, noise ordinances are really impossible to enforce. It's unfortunate, but you have to have sound meter, and you have to measure so much distance. It's real pain. They, I, I don't understand, uh, there's actually a truck driver in here, and he doesn't say it's well good, you don't want him. I, I rode with the man all the way to New York City with a truck with two straight pipes on it. I had trouble hearing too late, and I've lost some hearing today. That's ridiculous. Nothing all the reason, it just won't hear it. It's going to have, where's it? Won't hear about nothing, anyway. Quick, quick. All right, anybody else want to address? We got one missing. Come on ahead, there, Doug, and, uh, while he's coming, the week, we have a little space and, and, uh, vehicle that controls it. We like to keep three minutes, but if you need more time, you will be given more time. I reserve the right to cut it off if it gets too long, but if, if, at the end of three minutes, you're not going to be called up, okay? And you, you will be treated with respect toward that. If you're, you know, like I said, just keep in mind that, we have, we still reserve that right, but you're not going to be timed to say.
I'm gonna move as quick as I can, and Monica, I believe there's...
We do have some correspondence that's gonna be related to this, so we're gonna go, go forward with one piece of correspondence before we do this citizens' time for it.
So this letter is to the Roy Tree Town Council, and the subject is proposal for town assumption of maintenance for stormwater pond at Sherwood Estates. Dear members of the Roy Tree Town Council, I'm writing on behalf of the property owners within the Sherwood Estates housing development to require, to inquire about the town's potential interest in assuming ownership and maintenance responsibility for the stormwater pond located below the development. The pond serves as a key component of the community's stormwater management system, helping to protect local infrastructure, control runoff, and preserve water quality within the town of the retreat. Its continued operation and proper upkeep benefit not only Sherwood Estates, but also the broader community by supporting the town's environmental and public work objectives. The stormwater pond area encompasses less than one quarter acre, representing a relatively modest maintenance obligation. There are 28 residential lots within Sherwood Estates, and the owners are collectively willing to support an additional annual assessment of $25 to $50 per property payable to the town. These contributions could be dedicated to offset the cost of ongoing upkeep, inspection, and management of the stormwater pond, ensuring it continues to function properly and in compliance with relevant regulations. Additionally, easements from lots one, two, and three provide the town with convenient access to the pond area for maintenance and inspection purposes, ensuring that any outgoing, any ongoing responsibilities can be efficiently managed. We would appreciate your, the opportunity to discuss this proposal with the council and explore any steps necessary to move forward should the town express interest. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. We look forward to your response. Respectively, on behalf of the Sherwood Estates property owners, Mick Musser, 141 Red Apple Road, Roy Tree.
I have to hand out Stacy.
My name is Doug Schroeder. I appreciate you out tuning in to speak. I did not know it was gonna be tonight. I thought it was gonna be in November, um, and I promise I will move as quick as I can. While Jason was handing out some photographs, I do want to state right at the top, I speak for no one but myself, and that is as a resident of the town of Roy Tree. I am not going to offer a perspective on the ultimate issue that council's gonna have to decide. I'm a big boy. I know council's gonna do what council's gonna do, and my purpose here tonight is not to suggest a course of action. My purpose here tonight is I've heard a lot of talk about this, but I have heard one perspective that has not been articulated or verbalized. What you're looking at in the first group of photographs are pictures of what this thing is. It is basically an earthen berm with pipe that runs out of it. Around the pipe are some rocks. The purpose of this thing is to allow water to back up, coming from the west, coming from Ridgefield, back up against the earthen berm. When it gets high enough, the water flows down the pipe, and it flows out the pipe on the back end of it. So it is not a retention basin, it's a detention basin. Its purpose is to slow down the water, and not all rainwater is gonna fill this thing up. It's only when we bring really hard, like, holly level of rain. The second group of photos, it's a map to show you where this is located. I apologize, I don't know you all, I don't know where you live, but in the event you're not from my neck of the woods, this is where the thing's located. Going into the second pack, those are photographs of what this thing looks like when it is not maintained for 25 years. The leafy green and the grass stuff, that's probably okay. Grass has roots, roots hold soil, it's probably a good thing. It's the trees. Trees have root balls, trees die, root balls decay. Root balls and earthen berms don't get along with each other over the long run. The third set of photographs shows you that this thing, I say stormwater retention basin, this thing services property other than what's in Sherwood Estates. None of the houses on Sherwood receive any protection at all from this thing. The elevation of the houses on Sherwood are probably 30 feet higher than the top of this wall. If there is a flood that's gonna affect the houses along Sherwood, there's gonna be an old man in a big wooden boat, a bunch of animals going by. But I understand there are houses on the east end of Westfield, on the outlet side of this thing, that do receive benefit. It's probably Westfield, probably parts of Frye, probably parts of Chinkapin. More importantly, this thing collects water, more water from property not in the subdivision than in the subdivision. I am not a civil engineer, but the third set of photographs shows you the engineer that designed this put one 16-inch culvert across Sherwood. He put two 30-inch culverts across Ridgefield. It seems to me you're not putting the one where you expect the most water, you're putting the two. So I don't know the percentage, but I'm fairly certain significantly more water comes from outside the subdivision than from within the subdivision. This, this is the perspect, oh, let me address cost for a moment. To maintain this thing, I don't know. I am absolutely guessing here. I've never bush hogged in my life, but I've been told by people to bush hog this thing 20 minutes maybe. I paced it off. It's about 100 foot long and probably less than 50 foot wide. It is not taking care of the entire lot. It's just bush hogging this thing. I've been told town ordinance, gotta cut grass 12 inches or higher. I suspect that means bush hogging three times a year, once in the spring, hmm, once in the beginning of July, and once in October. If the grass on this thing grows like my friend Delver, for the last two summers, we haven't had rain in July and August and part of September, my grass, I haven't cut my grass fully since July. Assuming I'm wrong, assuming the town wants to cut it every other month, that's six times a year, 20 minutes a time, assuming I'm wrong, let's say 30 minutes a time, that's two hours, maybe three hours. I don't know what town employees get paid. I'm gonna assume $25 an hour. I'm gonna assume with benefits and all withholding taxes, it costs the town $50 an hour. 50 times two is 100, 50 times three is 150. Am I right or wrong? I don't know. That's my best guess after looking into this matter. So this is the perspective I have not heard anybody articulate. People that are dealing with this issue now are looking at it from today, tomorrow, next week. But what about 10 years from now? What about 20 years from now? What about 40 years from now? I hope, and I'm fairly certain, the town of Roy Tree's still gonna exist in 40 years. This thing's still gonna exist in 40 years. There are gonna be houses on Westfield, Frye, and Chinkapin in 40 years, but what may not be here in 40 years? The people that live up there now, and I know I got two of them in the room, so I'll be careful, most appear to be reasonable and responsible to me, but in 10 years, some of them are not gonna be there. In 20 years, even more won't be there. And in 40 years, probably most of them won't be there. So what the town should be looking at is what if the new group of owners that take up, the next generation, are not reasonable and not responsible? The association, the restrictions that created it are set to expire in 2038. They can be renewed for another 40 years based on a majority vote of the association, but what if they're not? The association has already been talked about dissolving it now. I doubt after 2038, if the restrictions have gone bye-bye, that the association is gonna hang around, but the town's still gonna be here. So what if the association doesn't manage? The next what if, what if the association decides to maintain this thing for the next 25 years, like it's been maintained for the last 25 years? The town has an ordinance, they can go take care of it, and they can put a lien on the property. Association doesn't own anything. It has no assets. It does not own this property. In fact, the association doesn't even have a right to access this property. We are at the pleasure of lot owner one, and if that lot owner is unreasonable and won't grant access, I don't know where that puts the association. I don't know where that puts the town. However, I know what Musser said in his letter. I don't know how the town feels about ownership. I can guess. But, and the easement, and the easement for right to access off Ridgefield Street back to this thing, to maintain this thing, that costs the town nothing. All my what ifs, if any of those come true, if the town has an easement to access for maintenance, the town always has the ability to deal with it. They don't have to ask permission. They don't, they don't have to worry about somebody saying no. They don't have to rely on the association existing. The town doesn't have to hope that the people living up there are gonna be responsible in how they deal with this. The perspective of the long term, the perspective of what if people don't do what they should, if the town considers that, I think the town will have an alternative perspective. If the town only has half the perspective, the chances of the town making the right decision is only half. Um, bear with me. The town can be self-sufficient, and everything that I've listed would have to go right for the town not to worry about this. I do know, I talked to the lady in charge of DEQ for this side of the state. There was an association in the city of Bristol that had one of these things, and the association dissolved. Who do you think fell to having to take care of it? It was the city of Bristol. Again, that's why I went over a little bit of the maintenance. You're not sending somebody out there once a week. You're not paving, you're not spreading gravel, nothing. Bush hogging. I believe, and again, I don't speak for Musser or the association, the neighbors up there would not object to paying an assessment. I don't know where Musser got his figures from, but if they pay $20 a lot annually, 28 lots, that's $560 to the town for maybe $200, $300, again, assuming that I'm totally wrong, there's a lot of cushion in that before the town has to spend any money. One thing I've been told is some people don't think the town should spend money if it only benefits a few citizens. That's why I tried to lay out this bene, this benefits people that aren't in that association. I know the town has other things that it does, and I am not speaking negatively. The farmer's market, I know there's not a lot of farmers, and not everybody can shop at the farmer's market, there's limited hours. I know about Heritage Day, I saw Monica there this year, but not everybody would participate in that, but the town still does public good by doing things like that. One comment that I would say about, two comments. At the end of his comments, Musser does talk about an easement. That means easement, not ownership. Musser also talks about this thing and taking care of the quality of the water. It does not, it's quantity. When this thing was permitted in 97, it was DCR, Portland Conservation Resources or Natural Resources. They only cared about the volume of water. Currently, the law has changed, DEQ's now in charge. DEQ, if they permitted it today, would be concerned about quantity as well as quality. I know I went quick, I know I gave you a lot of pictures. Happy to answer any questions you may have. If I don't have any answer, I'll do my best to find out. Thank you.
We appreciate you, uh, coming and making the presentation as well. Thank you.
Let, let me remain and add one more comment. If the town sees to make this an agenda item so more people can be put unnoticed, more people can input, and the town can get more than just me, um, that would be a good idea as well. Thank you.
Jason, can you walk me through the history? How did this development come to be?
Okay.
Refreshing, if I told them that.
So I'm gonna have to be careful in...
Be blunt, but we don't understand careful as well as we be blunt.
Okay, I will be the one, I've gone to the court, I've, I've done the research. Somewhere in 1997, Musser fought Roy Tree Land Development LLC, which was owned by Musser, his brother, and his mother and father, but Musser and his brother were in charge, filed what's called a declaration in the record, Circuit Court land records, that created the subdivision, that set forth the restrictions, the, um, mutual covenants, if you would. In that document, it lists 15, 16 things that you can't do. House has to be 1,800 square feet, um, can't have tar paper, can't have exposed concrete wire. In that document, it also said there would be a homeowners' association called Sherwood Estates Homeowners, Inc. It's a non-studied corporation. The other thing Musser had to do, again, that's a Musser, Roy Tree Land Development, they had to file paperwork with the State Corporation Commission because that is the thing that gives birth to a corporation. That was also done. Allegedly, although I have not, I don't have any of the records, allegedly, Musser and his brother met in their lawyer's office, elected Musser president. This thing was created by the SCC on November 3rd. By November 6th, Musser was signing documents as president of the association. The actual development, I heard Mr. Baer, the county administrator, say that the county had no responsibility for the development of the subdivision. What I know on the process, there had to have been certain construction drawings submitted and approved. Some would have gone to VDOT, some would have gone to DCR. They would have talked about the layout of roads, the grading, and stuff like that. So that is the history that I know of how that thing got built and how the association came to be. I don't wanna be accused of leaving something out. In the declaration, it does say the association shall be responsible for the maintenance of this thing, but it does not deed the land to the association. It does not give the association an easement. The association owns nothing. It has no assets. If they don't keep it up, and if the town does, and they go to put a lien, there's no property for the town to put a lien against for the association.
Just one owner.
Well, against the association itself, the association is a separate entity, it owns nothing. Now, the owner of lot one is the one that controls access to this thing, um, so I don't know the cut the grass ordinance. I, I've just been told that it exists, but I don't know what the town can do in doing against lot one. I, I just don't know. I mean, that's something that I just found out about three, four hours ago.
If there was no sunset clause in this?
The sunset clause is for the restrictions, and that's why you have a homeowners' association.
But the homeowners' association doesn't exist.
It does. It, it, the declaration said there would be one, and it was originally created with the State Corporation Commission. It's currently not in good standing with the State Corporation, but technically, it does exist, but if the majority of the association, lot owners say, we don't want it anymore, they can dissolve it.
So that was my other question was with Mr. Musser, and I'm not speaking to him or anything, but he developed this land with the assumption that he was going to be maintaining the drainage structure. I mean, is that not...
That's the question. Sunset clause.
Right, so, and then the other...
It didn't die, it still stands.
And then the other thing I have a question about is, is this is not signed by the association in the letter, it's signed by Mr. Musser. Does everyone in the association know what's going on? Is everyone sure?
With respect to that letter? With respect to that letter, I can assure you there are one, two, three.
I think that's legitimate.
Five, five people know about the existence of that letter.
So he just offered for them to pay additional taxes representing someone in Sherwood that may or may not even know, right?
There was discussion at one point that if the town took over the maintenance, the lot owners would agree to pay the town a fee. But there was discussion. And in fact, based on what I thought was gonna happen, they were gonna just feel the town out to see if you're even interested and let you know that we'll pay if we have to type thing. But as far as the specifics in that letter, I know the full association has not seen that, they have not weighed in on that. To answer your other question, the plat that was put to record in ninety-seven when all this was created shows a permanent stormwater drainage easement that runs across Sherwood about where Mr. Duncan's house, down into those vacant fields. It comes out from where the culvert is on Ridgefield Street and goes back to this thing. As far as I know, that easement is always gonna exist.
Mr.?
Can I take a sign in sheet, please?
Sure.
Okay.
Hold on just a minute.
Somebody else is doing, say, this is town.
We have a meeting.
It's all right, you get to go watch television.
No. Zoo. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Well, now, as I sit here and do this, it takes a motion in a second before we discuss.
Citizen time.
You have that citizen.
Oh. Well.
I'll put the timer on.
I just have one thing to say. I'm Jason Childers, I live at two six eight Sherwood Avenue. Three times in this letter, the author of this letter talks on my behalf three times without me knowing about it. He's answering a question that me as a property owner has not been talked to or given an answer or given an okay towards me as a property owner, any of these. And that's all, that's all.
That's the reason that I asked him about the sunset clause. It's still Mr. Musser's problem. Now, to go in, if, if I may, to go much beyond this, I have to have motion in a second before we can discuss it.
I have one more question, man.
Go ahead.
Who owns lot one?
Right now, Row Retreat Land Development LLC. They also own lot two and three, three lots that have nothing on them down there in the dip in Ridgefield.
Am I correct in saying that VDOT required this thing?
Okay. They're with me. I have been told that in order to accept the roads up there into the state secondary road system, VDOT required a stormwater management plan. That's what started all of this. And I get it from the developer's perspective, selling lots and houses in the subdivision with state maintained roads is a little better than private roads. VDOT signed an agreement with the county, which basically says, my words, I have got it. Says, VDOT's gonna require this, but VDOT's not gonna have any responsibility or liability for this stuff. The county required the association to sign a document, which is almost word for word with the document that VDOT, between VDOT and county. The first page of that thing says, VDOT requires it, but they're gonna, gonna have any responsibility or liability. The second page says, the county's not gonna have any responsibility or liability unless their employees damage it. I'm wondering how their employees are gonna damage it by looking at it? Even if they walk back there, how are they gonna dam? So it sort of foreshadows that there may be maintenance. And it does say that the homeowners associate, this stormwater document says, a homeowners association is a corporation. Remember, granted on the third, Musser elected president on the fifth, this document was signed by Musser as president on the sixth.
Am I also correct in assuming that this property, when this all transpired, was not within the corporate limits of the town of Row Retreat?
It was not. And this stormwater agreement that was signed by the county and the association specifically says it does not create any rights in the public or any rights in any third party. And since it's between the county and the association, the association isn't in the county anymore. The town was not a party to that agreement. Not that it really mattered, because that, that agreement doesn't say who's responsible. That agreement says who's not responsible. I have been told it's what you call a feel-good document to make people feel good and somebody at VDOT was gonna have to tell some supervisor higher up in the food chain that this was going on. And I'm assuming VDOT has a checklist for developments and this document is one of the things on the checklist. And Mr. Mayor, just so you know, I am not asking for a motion, I'm not asking for anything except for maybe let's make it an agenda item in the next meeting so we can have the discussion.
Okay. Jason, to set out, is there any other party, what the rest council now and citizen? We'll make sure that that.
Anybody else wanna?
We'll make sure that, if the wall be out occasionally pushed too hard, let them. But with that said, we'll move to the correspondence section.
I have a thank you letter here from the Red Cross Bloodmobile. Dear Town of Row Retreat and employees of Red Cross Bloodmobile, thanks you for the use of the community center and setting up the chairs and tables. We had fifty-five donors sign in and fifty-one units of blood product collected. Another successful blood collection went because of the generous and loyal residents of our beautiful community. Thanks so much, Kay Corvin, leader of the Retreat Red Cross Bloodmobile.
She's done a good job.
She does.
Okay, is your correspondence from the town office?
No, sir.
Do we have correspondence from the? Or leave anybody out? Now, before I move to Derek, we always offer to citizens to come to our meeting an outlet. You can stay and watch the zoo or, if like the two ladies, if you want to go home and watch TV, you may do so. No worries, we'll, we'll talk about you when you get up.
Mr. Mayor, keep me from running my mouth anymore, I'm gonna go home to my.
We appreciate your, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, Jason and Monica know how to do it.
Yeah, this looks like I ran these fellows off, but I didn't, I just.
Sorry for that, I was made aware of it about six while I was eating dinner.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you taking time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
On your way back. Okay, Derek, you got something on the police report?
Yeah, eighteen incidents this month, three welfare checks, two business alarms, one suspicious person, assisted rescue, one disturbance, one traffic checkpoint, one thousand two hundred thirty-nine miles patrol. Now, that traffic check, back at the first of the month, the sheriff's office came down, we done a saturation with patrol, we're in town and we done a checkpoint out on highway eleven, we wrote several tickets. Made one DUI arrest on that, so it was.
You all did good.
And I, I just have a concern that the doctor paper, we, doctor paper, they, I know it's kind of thrown together last minute, but we need to, if we're gonna keep doing that, we need to make better plans. Because we got down there and somebody was having something at the, at the community center and it was a pretty big mess. So, I mean, the people at the community centers had to stand up there and block traffic, because they have, is having a pretty big event. That's, that's all I have.
Got wet in that road check, too, did you? Got wet in that road check?
Uh, I didn't mean that, it, it rained before, right before, did, we, we, we missed the rain.
They won't melt.
I do.
Uh, that was smart melt, I shouldn't say that. Anybody have any other questions for the chief? If you.
Just a comment on the, on the chief. And then after the football game, and then after the football game, our church had to beat the band and he stayed and didn't drink a bottle of water, but anyway. But no, he, he stayed and played with the, with the kids, they had some games and all that and I think we say it all the time, that's what community police is talking about, so.
I don't think he won that game either. Yeah, they cheated.
That's, that's a great thing.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, it really was.
We ready for Halloween, dude?
Yeah, I forgot about that, Halloween night, yeah, I've been working Halloween night, Sherwood one-way straight like we always do, so.
Tell, tell Jason's wife. What you had.
She's the only one every other wrong way down the.
She doesn't understand.
And I got, so I took a picture of her and I, I showed it to her and I said, honey, I shit up all people. Please shit me.
Okay. Last call, we have a question. Police chief, Derek. Okay, we've been having pretty good success going down unfinished business and.
Well, I will, I will apologize. I didn't get, usually about four-ish, I do a town manager's report. Well, we had a water leak that I've been down at on, next to Mike Holston's house, if everybody knows where I'm talking about, Fry and Elmerian. So, uh, I have been down there, so, uh, about a three inch, but it's a, it's gushing, it's pouring pretty good. They're down, they're down there, they were down there digging right before I came up here, so hopefully they've taken care of that problem. The tank, the tank level's not dropped, it was ninety-one when we found it, right before I came into council, it was still ninety-one at the tank, so we're, we're holding on. Downtown revitalization, you know, I don't have anything, you know, that you can look at, but it's coming along pretty well. Uh, the brick, the brick is being completed. We are meeting on the fifth with the Barrington, Nathaniel Brown, the architect, also with the people who did get the playground bid. Just so we're in coordination with everything. What we want to do is, we don't wanna, they were saying they could open the playground as early as late winter. Well, we decided, we didn't think that would be what you guys would want. We won't, you know, have construction going on right beside a playground and, so we asked them if it was okay. This was on a conference call, let's do it, let's do it at the same time where we don't have kids running through construction zones and all this stuff, so hopefully Memorial Day of next year, both open at the same time, pavilion, splash pad, playground. That way we can have one grand opening and the kids hopefully flood in and enjoy the whole summer in the water with the playground with their, with their kids.
Jason, I have been asked, when does the basketball and pickleball come in?
Whenever you decide you want me to advertise it. If you want it to start next spring, we'll do the advertisement right now.
Was that part of the original?
It was gonna be phase two.
Yeah, that was phase two.
Oh, okay. I, I was like, Bob, I thought it was all one.
I mean, the money's been budgeted, correct? I mean, let's go ahead and, we can go ahead and bid it out.
Let's do it. Get her done. You need a motion for that?
No, it was budgeted money, so.
Do it.
Okay. Going back, uh, Jeremy did come by today and went over some things. But one other topic before I get to Jeremy. I sent you guys an email. There was a Channel Seven thing for the, for the splash pad and the playground. And we were hoping that exactly what happened would happen when people saw the story. We got a call from a muralist, or I got an email on that Saturday from a, a muralist that actually lives in Evelyn Lehman's old house. And we've done some research on some of his work and it is absolutely, in my opinion, amazing. I spoke to him today, we're gonna meet with him tomorrow. What I would like to do, and I'd kind of like to have some input, is give him some kind of idea of, because he, he does murals all the time, of what we want encompassed in our mural and let him come up with a, with a abstract or whatever to, to show people. I'm assuming, do we want to go the traditional railroad cabbage Dr. Pepper? Is this something we want to think about? Maybe get some, maybe get some public input?
Yeah, that's, I mean, well, I'm not, just my suggestion, I would, we can, we, we, they don't have a little time, we can get some public input. Probably we can think about some things we'd like to.
We do have time, but there is one pressing thing. Jeremy's wanting to put the porch on the side of the building.
It takes up part of your building opposite you, that's all I can think of, but you got a, you've got a roof.
Now, he did, now, he did say that he could frame it up and they could work around it. But, you know, I would kind of like to have the mural before. That, that's just my opinion.
Be easier for him to do without the porch.
Did he give you any idea or any estimate or?
He'll be here, I mean, if you want to come by tomorrow. I can't have more than three or I have to advertise the meeting, but.
It would probably have been, I wanted to study the wall, it's more like.
Well, I will tell you, he told me that this is his new hometown, he's gonna see it every day, so he's going.
It's managed as much as anything.
Well, just get some ideas from him and then go from there.
That, that's why I set up the meeting, but I just wanted to let you know, we are meeting with a muralist, you know, to get some, some initial figures and some initial thoughts on what we might, what we might do down there. Another thing, Jeremy did come by today, he should have the bathrooms completed by.
He said March.
By March, the bathrooms will be completed. He's gonna have the, the windows and doors all installed. He did come in and, and show us the setup for the bathroom, which we can, we can email that to you. It does have some, some bathrooms with drains in them for, that are exclusively from the outside to the splash pad and playground coming in. And then it also has, like we talked about, some that are exclusive only to the inside venue. So there's gonna be bathrooms for both. And then we are gonna have the, the room for our splash pad stuff, plumbing and things like that there as well. He did recommend that for economy and for comfort, doing two separate HVAC units, one for those, that bathroom unit, a small one for the bathroom unit, then for the bigger unit, because it is a taller ceiling that you could regulate down more in the, in the summer and when, kind of like we do the community center, you know, please set it back to so-and-so. But, you know, we can keep the outside bathroom units at a constant. What he's saying is he doesn't want to heat all of the, the big structure and. What he's saying is he doesn't want to heat all of the, the big structure and, and not need to be heated. So he did make that recommendation and I don't, I think from a efficiency standpoint, it's gonna work itself out in the end. And we're gonna be using natural gas, which is gonna help us a lot.
I would like to comment on the brickwork. Those guys really done a good job. I mean, taking those bricks out, sliding bricks in, that was, that took a lot of time.
Very meticulous.
You, you're not gonna be able to tell that those windows were put in there.
Exactly. I, I made a comment here, not a nice comment. If we listened to one of our council members, we'd have to tear the thing down. I've got to say I fit tearing it down tooth and nail and I've lost and we still have a good people. So anyway.
But real excited.
Yeah, it's, it, it, you wouldn't, it wouldn't, it must have, you couldn't have done without costing a quarter of a million or more dollars more because that building
Well. Well, one of the things, I mean, and I, and when I say this, I don't say it lightly. One of the things that, that I'm proud of is that over the past year, council's been like, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, just like we did tonight. That, you know, we're getting things done and we're not, you, you guys are, I want to commend you on how you're going about getting this done. I just, I'll just say that much because we went for so long with so many delays and, you know, we heard it in the community. We put a thing out for Heritage Park and somebody wanted to name it Never Gonna Happen Park. So I want to commend you guys for giving the green light for some of this stuff to be done.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one comment about our buildings and our, and our facilities. We're doing a lot of things down here that are gonna be really nice and people are gonna really appreciate that thing. But we don't want to neglect structures that we already have.
Already had.
Like the community center.
I agree. That's all I have for downtown unless somebody has any questions.
Just keep moving.
Heritage Day, I'm assuming we don't know anything. Upgrades to the water plant, I, I really don't have anything to speak on as far as the water plant goes. We're functioning fine, um, but I will say, uh, by reaching out to a young man that just happened to come in and give me one of his business cards out of the blue. We saved about twenty, about thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, it was actually a twelve hundred dollar invoice and it looks like it was professionally done in my opinion. He not only did the tanks, he did all the sidewalk, all the concrete around it. And he will be by to pick up his check tomorrow and I'll shake his hand and tell him we'll be in touch in the future, so. Darryl Look Property, I'll be honest with you, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Sobey about that. Something that's not on here though, I will tell you, he has written up the purchase agreement, uh, for the lady in Smith County. She's gonna show her attorney and then we'll both sign it and then we'll go through the closing, so he has done that. He did that. Water accountability, um, I still, I hadn't heard back from Mr. Belcher from Giles County. But I will tell you that November the fifth, the same day that we're meeting with the engineer and architect. They're coming in to do those insertion valves. They came Monday, but the weather was really not, not congruent with us doing what we needed to do. And we actually had, had a hole to dig that we're gonna try to have done before they get here on that day. They can do them both in one day, so it will be November the fifth, the day after Election Day, that those will be put in. And we're talking about the eight inch at the small orange water tank and the six inch over.
We can isolate the tanks.
We can isolate that and we can, I know I've talked about in the past, we will have a true reading for the trailer park instead of having to, uh, estimate. And that should, that, I'm thinking that'll probably affect our water accountability somewhat. And did you get the water accountability? It actually went down four percent this month, so. Doctor Pepper Day?
We did.
I mean, can I just, can I just give you my observations?
What's with being a punk?
It's T-shirt day. I mean.
We had some really nice vendors that you all gathered up at the last second and that's where I spent my time.
Vendors had a good time. They all said they had a good time. I don't, I know one, one of them was pretty successful in selling stuff, but that's one reason I always hesitate about getting vendors because I worry they don't make enough to pay for them.
It has to be profitable for them to come back.
I think I rather it too.
Well, it's snug, but it was amazing the number of people who did come.
That is true. There were a lot of people there not for the T-shirts, for other reasons too.
Well, they came early.
And that, that kind of.
But that, I would happen to be there while the controversy over the parking, Derek handled that, but that got to be spic. That's unfortunate, I'm sorry.
It's two years in a row that we've had some, some other thing rented. The first year, you know, the riches did their thing on the same day as Doctor Pepper Day. This year they left the tent, which was really nice though. But they, they moved it to Saturday, but we really shouldn't, if we're gonna do this, we shouldn't do anything connected to the town or something else.
Well, that was rented, um, just in the town office's defense is we didn't know, we didn't even know Doctor, when Doctor Pepper Day was. That was rented months and months ago.
Yeah.
So I think that we needed to establish when Doctor Pepper Day is gonna be earlier in the year so that we can mark that off.
Well, we always said it was the Sunday before the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Another thing that probably, that really didn't help is, uh, one of the town employees, Barnes caught on fire. That, and every fireman was down there and the fire trucks ended up coming in at the end. So, you know, the parking was kind of touch or go there for a little while. There wasn't as much parking as usual.
They were impatient about it too.
Yeah, I mean, and even the people in the community center, we took some barrels up there and, and they were, they were, they were cordial about it.
Doctor Pepper was very satisfied with everything, of course, they would be.
Well, on top of that too, we changed the location. So that kind of turned another wrench because of the construction.
And that, and you know, that may be something in the future that really helps, cause, you know, those kids come down there for, with a splash pad. Well, they might not be doing, they won't be splash padding in, but, you know, there'll be a, a nice playground there and it may, it may work out.
I think that Doctor Pepper and Splash. Probably, probably from a madness thing.
It'd be a little sticky.
That muralist could probably make it end on one. So just, just so we know.
It was amazing.
The twenty-fourth is on a Saturday. It is on a Saturday next year. So do we want it on the, you want us to go ahead and block off the seventeenth?
We had always said it's the Sunday before, yeah.
Okay, but for all intents and purposes, we're gonna have it at the Heritage Park, correct? Or you wanted to have it at the Doctor Pepper stage again?
I don't know what we want. What do you all want to do?
I mean, we can block off the seventeenth at the community center anyway.
Let's, let's make the decision. You said ten, two, fours on a Saturday? But it, that, it's like Jim said.
Might help your crowd more.
It's a T-shirt day.
I had hoped when we started this thing that we would expand in two days. I think, I think that even getting people to display stuff, it's hard for one day. Now, fair and folk life is one day and there's ten thousand people. They do a fantastic job, but they're well established. I played the Valley Cruz Fair this year. There were ten thousand people at that thing and it's one day. I don't know, Derek. I, I think you, I, I have a big feeling about both, both ways, so. The, the free T-shirt thing is both a detriment and, and has value too. Because, uh, well, there was a, there was a couple there from, from, well, there was a couple there from England this, this time that didn't really know anything about any of it. They were with one, went in and somebody was talking about it and they decided to come. There was a guy from Texas that was there because he had heard about Doctor Pepper. Uh, there were several people there that were way off that had just heard about it and stopped him, so, uh, in fact, I don't, I didn't even have that T-shirt.
So I'm just gonna say, I mean, I know we don't have to make a decision behind about the location, but by then
Your hair.
The playground, everything will be really well established, I would, I can show that off.
The band had a good time. The people that stayed listened to them.
They were really, they were really good.
The last one down the park, when me and them were five inch five.
They're good boys.
It was gone.
They all are, but besides that, they're really good musicians. It was a good show. And because I was crippled, you know, I didn't get to stay very long, but anyway. I got to come, so with that said, that's, well, we've lost our town manager. We made him mad. He left.
If we, if we are gonna do this, let's say this by the next meeting, let's set a date and, and allocate the money.
Well, we can, Derek, what?
Yeah, we can go ahead and say what we're gonna do.
In other words, you can actually say it, but. You know how much money you got from the band, know how much, uh, you know, how they're all vendors, Monica's got a really good. It'd been nice to have food vendors at that.
We have one.
There were some food vendors. I think the England weather hadn't what to do with it in anything. Because there were a surprise number of people that were, I, I didn't, I didn't know what to say. James Pratt, who brought out his anti-car and banged on it, he just grinned whenever I started wiping it off.
Yeah, he's a good soul. He's a good soul. Okay, Jason, you, um, when you get done. Walk down on this and then we'll, we'll make a conclusion.
Uh, we're new business.
Uh, well, I'm actually new business. Is there any other continuing business?
Well, I mean, there is, it's actually unfinished business, but it's not on the agenda. I did reach out to Lionheart, the, the group that did paint the caboose. And they are willing to paint the firehouse for us. My question is, and I did speak with, uh, some individuals from the fire department. It is Sherwin-Williams paint. It is a darker red than what was currently the big swatch down there, for lack of a better term.
They already have the paint.
They've got all the paint.
Can we see, uh, they painted again and see what the, see how much darker it is?
It's supposed to match the paint of the Dutch pantry is what they were going for. If you look at the backside of the Dutch pantry.
And it, I don't think it would be nice to match caboose.
It's darker than Monica's sweater or whatever. It's a whole lot darker than that.
Let me ask you this.
I'm very bothered.
Yes.
I thought, I could see.
I really think we're, you painted that stuff, I mean, that's dope.
All right, I'll set it up. Use the red paint?
It, it would be all right?
I mean, I don't, I don't know what's involved in taking the, the paint that they have, matching it and then taking a, uh, the color of the.
Paint the thing.
Okay.
It's, yeah. I, I think it'd be a slap in the face to make them eat that. There's just some things that could cost you more than more paint. That's exactly right. Uh, there, there's, this town's, their feelings need to be considered. Nobody considers mine, especially Jim Lloyd.
You don't have any.
Yeah, well. And I'll, I will say, but I'll joke and decide there is something to that, you know, they, they got to live with it. Roger was sort of insincere, it's over it, so. Me not, Jason, you go take care of that, all right?
Yes, sir.
Now, new business, you got?
No, that was.
That was new business.
Finance and appropriations.
Okay.
Um, I gave you all, all your copies of the, um, audit report. And, um, she will be here at the November meeting, um, which is the first meeting suspense, the second November meeting, um, to do her presentation. But I thought you might want those to look over and before she comes and does her presentation. I am gonna do the personal property tax conversion tomorrow. It's been moved up a day. So I should be able to get those personal property tax tickets out in the next, um, few days. The real estate book, I got the totals today. I have not got the actual spreadsheet on that yet from the commissioner's office, but he said he would have that to me on Thursday. So if that happens, then we won't need to, um, change our due dates or anything. I should be able to get those real estate tickets out too. So it looks like it's all gonna happen finally. That's all.
Um, personnel ordinances and legal matters, I did send out an email, um, from our attorney. We did file our breach of contract, uh, order with JG Corn and they never did communicate a reply. So they sent, uh, the clerk of court with county a, uh, request that we, uh, that we get our due for what they did not do at our downtown lot.
Oh, really? They're gonna settle with what you're saying?
They haven't, they haven't said anything. Their attorneys have, have, have the, were served with the information from us. But they just turned a blind eye or forgot or whatever, so.
They were ignoring us is what they did.
So we've asked the court to go ahead and, and.
Take, take action.
Let us have our.
That'd be wonderful. I'd love to see it, but, but hear him whine.
But I don't know if everybody got it. I thought I'd sent it to everybody.
Oh, I didn't see that, but I, I, I'm interested in that. I'm interested in that.
Uh, one more thing on personnel, um, ordinances. I've probably should have done this during finance, but, um, I have one. I've, I've still have two business license that have not complied. One of them, I'm just missing one tax return and I messaged them again today about that. And the other one, I have not heard anything from, so that's probably gonna be the one that Mr. Sobey's gonna have to
Deal with.
To deal with, but I'm pretty sure I can get the information from the other one.
Very good. That's one of those cases that's sort of in your hands and go ahead and do. Strike. Okay. The town manager's report, do you have anything to add?
No, unless anybody has some questions. Seems like there's something that I have, haven't had time to sit down and think this evening.
What's been going on?
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a busy, especially busy yesterday and today got really, really busy, uh, with some of the stuff going on. I'm trying to think of anything Bob had brought up at the last meeting. Called about the paint and yes, uh, LED lighting at the community center. Hopefully that'll be done very quickly. We're gonna probably put about the same. Have you, did, were you down, you were down there that Friday night? Do you think the same thing that's on the stage would be too bright?
No, I, I don't think there's any thing that would be too bright down there.
Okay, cause, cause what we have there was not that expensive and can be set up. We can put one on the front of one side and then the backside of the community, of the pavilion as well to shine out, so.
It, it was, it was dark down there and the, the people for the auction, uh, when they were loading up, I mean, we were over in the pavilion and we could not see what they were doing, so I know they were having difficulty seeing what they were doing.
Now, that back corner is awful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably ought to look at the lighting in the pavilion also.
We've already, we've already discussed that, we're ordering some, some smaller, it's not very thick at all, UV lights that are really, really bright.
Yeah, Patrick put new bulbs in there that afternoon.
And I talked to Patrick, he actually has some in his home that he said are, are too bright for a house, so. And, uh, they're not very expensive, so we're gonna look into replacing those.
Good.
Anything else?
Got you.
Um, we will be, uh, I just wanna let you guys know that we will be advert, brings up one other thing, we will be advertising for a water sewer plant operator, um, in the, the near future. Um, also, uh, speaking of advertisement, uh, went down, um, and was talking about getting rid of some of our equipment for scrap. And lo and behold, there's, there's a lot more interest in one of those vehicles than what, what I ever dreamed there would be. So I think instead of scrapping, we're gonna go ahead and advertise it out for bid, because there's a, a few people that have
Made it.
Have desired to pay more than, to pay more than scrap on the equipment, so we will be doing that as well. We'll be advertising that as surplus and we'll go ahead and do both vehicles surplus at once, so we don't have to pay two advertising fees. And that will be the bucket truck and the old chipper truck. So they will be, the old chipper truck will be replaced by the mini dump that we already have, which we're gonna convert it in, we're gonna leave it as a snowplow, so we'll have four VDOT snow removal vehicles this year instead of three. And that also, we're gonna put a, a bed on it, an enclosed bed that we can put on and take off as needed. So we can use it as the, as the chipper truck and then we can use it for whatever else we want and snow removal, so. We'll have an extra snow truck this year, um, but we will be getting rid of those two surplus items.
Isn't there quite a bit of other stuff back there that?
They, they took it not long ago, but, you know, as time goes on, different motors and, and stuff from the water plant get come down there and they, you know, as they bring in fittings that they find from places, there's, there's been some scrap back there in the past and I don't know how much is there now. But cat, uh, scraps going for seven dollars a hundred right now.
Yes, it's, it's, it's cheap. Okay, Monica, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we wrote these, anything else? I thought you were gonna say, okay. So we wrote these checks, AZ Office Resource, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, Amazon, thirty-five dollars and twenty cents, Atmos Energy, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, Blue Ridge Analytical, two thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars, BMS Direct, four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents, BMS Direct, thousand six hundred dollars, Bright Speed, seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, Crandall Customer Metal, three thousand six hundred dollars, David Anderson, four hundred and fifty dollars, Electronic Systems, thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents, EMS Incorporated, two hundred dollars, Fort Chiswell Septic Service, three, three thousand one hundred dollars, Joshua Dunford, a thousand four hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents, Lane Enterprises, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents, Lincoln Financial Group, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, Lyons Cleaning Service, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, Eminem Construction, fifty thousand dollars, Mccone's Exterior Cleaning, a thousand two hundred dollars, National Pools of Run Oak, thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars, Parkway Gas, a thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents, Principal Financial Group, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, R and R Enterprises, five thousand five hundred dollars, Rochelle Coleman, forty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, Shred It USA, ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, Southwest Crane, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the Lane Group, two thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents, and that's a total of a hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
I have a question, we, we vacated, is that the right word, a hating?
Bid eleven.
It's coming. I'm looking.
Veteran, it's Veterans Day.
I had to sign it, that's the reason I asked you that, I, I didn't sign it and I thought maybe I missed it, I'm sorry, I didn't have the right date.
One thing I didn't report on, I know that was brought up at the last meeting, I did have somebody that's writing me up a quote for the porch at the community center, at the stage and at the caboose, um, he's gonna be quoting me the Trex, um, that way, and vinyl, that way we can put it up, you, you, and we won't have to worry about it. The Trex is, has come a long way, you can put it on there and, what's the lifespan on that stuff, forty years?
Probably.
So, next time it needs to be replaced, I doubt I'm here and.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, commend the guys at the shop. There was a lady, a senior citizen that had a problem with her husband, uh, recently, uh, his mobility.
Right.
And she called and a couple of family guys went down there and helped her with the situation.
You know, the, the town is here for more reasons. One of the things I said earlier, just to, uh, underline the book, Paul said was, what the town doesn't necessarily, it visits to make money. And that's a good, that they, we don't want to run it all behind, if somebody needs something, we're available, I think, we should. They need to be committed.
They were there just a short period of time after she called.
Well, one thing about those guys is the crew we got now are not only hard workers, they're good people. I mean, they, they truly are, they care about people, so some of them need to clean their language up from time to time, but.
Okay, if you have anything else, anybody wants to bring to the fore the council, so. And Reverend Jones has seconded, so thank you all for the.